Hi, everyone. It's Marta Burgland with 13 News Now. Thanks so much for joining us on the 13 News Now Plus app. Coming up in just a few minutes, we'll hear from the family of Kalia Jones. She's the Mitchville High School student here in Newport News who died in February after collapsing at school. In my hand here, I have the lawsuit that the family intends to file against the school division and also members of the city after Kalia died. Remember, she collapsed at school. The family alleging that the school did not do enough to help Kalia when she collapsed, waiting nine minutes, according to the family, to render aid. In just a few minutes, that press conference will start, so we'll stand by and get ready to hear from the family.
I'm Attorney Ben Crump, along with Attorney Mark Crutis and Attorney Brooke Cluse. We have the honor of representing the family of Kalia Jones. Present with us today is her mother, Kiana Stewart, and her sister, Kiara Stewart, and a lot of friends and family who are still devastated about this tragedy. I've worked with Attorney Crutis on many matters here in Virginia, and this is one of the most heartbreaking ones because this is a child who went to school somewhere where we expect our children to be safe. I think about the pain of Kiana saying, "I sent my daughter to school where people are supposed to take care of her, make sure she's safe, and at minimum, follow the state laws, follow the policies and regulations at the school, and at most, follow common sense." This is not just about getting justice for Kalia. It's about having a teachable moment for Newport News, having a teachable moment for the state of Virginia, having a teachable moment for America. I mean, it's common sense. A person passes out, you check for a pulse, you do CPR, you get a defibrillator. Attorney Crutis is going to go into detail because he's a brilliant lawyer. He's going to tell you all the technicalities, but this is common sense. My 11-year-old daughter understands when somebody passes out, you check for a pulse, and if you don't have one, you try to render aid, you try to do CPR. And we all know now that you try to see if there's a defibrillator. And Attorney Crutis, the state of Virginia, I understand, made it law in 2023 that every school must have working defibrillators in them. And they even have policy, I understand from Attorney Crutis, that everybody had to be trained on how to use the defibrillators. But yet, none of those in charge of the school got the defibrillator. And Mark is going to talk about our lawsuit where it is very clear that had they just used the defibrillator, got the oxygen going to her brain, that Kalia be here today, she would be smiling, that beautiful smile today. She would be looking forward to talking about college. I mean, it's so unfair. At 16 years old, you're at school. It's preventable. This has to be a teachable moment, so no other family has to endure this. I think in 2012, there was a Virginia high school student who also died in a similar fate. We can't have anymore. We just can't. That would be just a stain on everything we hold dear, especially the legacy of Kalia and the other young lady. I say this before I turn it over to Attorney Crutis. We filed this lawsuit because we can't just let people simply say, "Oh, that was unfortunate" and sweep it under the rug. If it was your child, would that be acceptable to you? Or would you do like this strong mother, say, "No, we're going to fight for justice. We're going to fight for the legacy of my child. We're going to fight to say that she mattered." And so this lawsuit is about saying, "Kalia, life mattered, and we must do better." Attorney Mark Crutis, who I've had the honor of working with to get justice for other families here in Virginia, is my great co-counselor, and he's going to talk to you about some of the merits of our $85 million lawsuit to send a message that we cannot have any of our children die like Kalia Jones died at the Mitchville High School. Attorney Crutis?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I've worked with Ben before. You could see he brings great vigor and passion and care to all of these circumstances. In February 20 of this year, Kalia was starting her sophomore year at Mitchville High School. She was really loved by her peers. She was doing really well in school. Her best class seemed to be history. She had an A in that class. She was attending a class at the driver's education, and when she emerged from the driver's education class, she was smiling and laughing with friends, and then she collapsed in the hallway. We know all this because we've seen a video taken at the school that has not been released to the public. It has not been released to us yet, but we had an opportunity to go into the school offices and to view that video. After seeing that video, we have filed the lawsuit today. And the lawsuit alleges that when Kalia came outside of the classroom, as I said, she smiled with her friends, and then she collapsed against a locker and fell to the ground. Sadly, you could see her feet twitching, and then there's no movement. Almost immediately, a word went out that a student had collapsed in the hallway, and a number of people responded, but they failed to act. The evidence will show, when you see this video, that Kalia is down for 16 minutes. Only for 17 seconds does anybody provide CPR to her, and nobody obtains the AED. There were three of them in that school, and none of them were brought to the scene. So the video shows Kalia collapsing in the hallway, and immediately, word going out. A number of teachers come nearby, but it's not until the passage of nine minutes that the school resource officer spontaneously starts CPR on Kalia. But then, unfathomably, 17 seconds thereafter, just stops. And then another seven minutes pass before the rescue squad arrives at the school. When the rescue squad arrives, I believe it shows them to be perplexed and angry when you look at the evidence, and AED is requested. This is a device that provides an electronic charge to somebody that does not have a rhythm. It's been mandated in schools for a year, but all the way back in 2013, a law was passed, Gwynet's Law, which stated that it was permissive to have it in the school. This school appropriately had three of them there, and to be a licensed professional in a school, an administrator or teacher, there is a requirement that you know CPR and that you also are experienced in operating an AED. Kalia needed her teachers, the assistant principal, the principal, the SROs, and the police on the scene to come forward and take charge of this matter. They are the individuals that, when you send your child out, you're trusting that they will take care of your children. But no one unfathomably does anything other for 17 seconds when the SRO provides CPR. It's inexplicable as to why it was stopped and why none of the others jumped in. The school nurse, the video shows, was kneeling right next to the SRO when he halted giving CPR. She was there the entire time period. Now, as I stated, and we've detailed in the complaint, for quite some time, there has been a requirement that schools have a plan. This is mandated by state law to deal with emergencies just like this. And the school required all of its teachers, its principals, assistant principals, and other individuals to be CPR and AED certified. They did not step in. The rescue squad, when they arrived, they started CPR. They fixed the AED. At that point, it did not advise a shock. CPR was commenced, and then a Lucas machine, which is a separate standalone machine that provides CPR, was utilized. The rescue squad, as I said, they arrived after 16 minutes. They did CPR at the scene. Then she was transported to the hospital in full code. While at the hospital, a regime was carried out by the ER physicians, and then sadly, Kalia was declared dead. Her mother finally received a call from the school. There was a number of people that were called initially. She rushed to the school, I mean, I'm sorry, to the hospital, only to find out that at that point that her daughter had passed away. I have been spending time with Kiana Stewart, the mother, who's right here, and she has shared with me how difficult this has been for her. She wants the legacy of her daughter to mean something, to not drift away. And so that's why we are here today, and that's why we have filed the lawsuit. Now, Kiana is concerned about this moment. She wants to represent her daughter as best as she can, but she's told me that this is going to be an emotionally difficult moment for her. So if we could all bear with her, Kiana, could you please tell us what you're thinking? And are there any Kleenexes?
I actually wrote something that I wanted to say. Hello, I'm Kiana Stewart, mother of Kalia Jones. Kalia was born a happy baby, walking and exploring life at eight months old. She grew up always knowing what she wanted and always had big goals and dreams. She loved baking and babysitting the neighborhood kids, feeding the homeless and volunteering on the infant wing at church. Kalia was baptized September 24th of 2023 and enjoyed serving the Lord and others. Kalia was giving, kind, and was always wearing a smile on her face. She is and she was a great kid, a great person, great daughter, and a great sister. Without Kalia, our lives have drastically changed. On February 20th, my life as I knew it would never be the same, the day a mother or parent never wants to witness. As a parent, you always want to live to be buried by your children at an old age, never burying your child at a young age. Today and forever, my heart is broken. I wake up daily with the pain and sorrow of knowing that my sweet baby girl is not with me on this journey called life. There is not a second of any day that goes by where Kalia is not a thought on my mind or her name is not coming out of my mouth. And I miss her tremendously, and this daily pain is so unbearable. No words can give me peace and understanding as to why this has happened and my baby girl has left us and want to be with the Lord. Every morning, I wake up wishing this is a nightmare, and I go to Kalia's room only to realize that this nightmare is my new reality that I'm living in every single day. Nothing in life will be the same without her. Our family is left trying to figure out how to pick up the pieces. No cakes are being made. No tremendous laughter is still in the room. I will never get the opportunity to see Kalia fulfill every parent's dreams of getting her license, of graduating high school, or walking down the aisle on her wedding day. I wouldn't wish this pain on anyone, nor can my mind grasp or come to terms with how or why we ended up here. We're standing here before you to be the voice of Kalia in hopes that no other parent will have to stand in my place as a voice for their child. Thank you.
It's always emotional, no matter how many times you stand with a parent, a broken-hearted parent grieving the loss of a child. It's just so unnatural. It's just so unnatural. I'm sure her sister tries to be there for her mother and her baby sister, but it's just unnatural. So thank you so much, Kiana, for bearing your heart as we fight for justice for your child. Attorney Crutis, unless you have something else, we'll take questions if you have some. You know, the one thing that struck me about this case was when Kiana called our office, we couldn't believe that nobody had acted. Nobody tried to save her, that she was just laying there. And our law firm had done a case for Zeke Upshaw, a professional basketball player in the National Basketball Association who passed out on a court in Michigan, and they didn't have the defibrillator to save him. And we successfully held them to account to try to say, nowhere in professional basketball would that happen again, because the message was sent with our lawsuit. And so it made me think that I'm shocked that it hadn't happened in, you know, the high schools across America. And that's when I called my good friend, Attorney Mark Crutis, who I knew was a stalwart advocate for justice, but also knew Virginia law intimately. And we started working, and he and Attorney Brooke Cluse, and our legal team were shocked when we found out Gwyneth's law, and then that it had been, I guess, in 2023. It had just been required before it was suggested, but then it was required. And so if everybody knew this was the law just a year ago, and everybody was probably training, having policy on it, how did this happen to Kalia? And so that's what made us get involved because this plea from this heartbroken mother and the fact that, just like we did in the NBA, we need to have a teachable moment for high schools across America, and that's what we endeavor to do in getting justice for Kalia. Mark, I don't know if you want to add?
Yeah, you know, Mike, in the schools themselves, the students are taught CPR on an annual basis. This was the time for their teachers to step forward and deal with this crisis for a student, and none of them did so. And I think that the record reveals that, when you see the videotape, there is a recognition at a certain point when the Lucas machine is turned on and the others are gathered there, that none of them acted. The SRO only acted for just seconds, and 16 minutes went by without anybody stepping forward and acting on behalf of this young girl. Every one of you, if you have children and you send them to school, your expectation would be that, you don't expect perfection, but you expect care and a desire of somebody to step forward and do the right thing. Sadly, that was not done in the circumstance. This beautiful young woman has been taken from her mother and her family.
And I was just going to add before your next question. When you see the video, I understand from her mother and the family that she has such a bright smile on her face before she passes out, and her friends all around her. I can only imagine what those other high school students are thinking while she was laying on the ground, and none of the adults were doing anything. You know, children learn from us. And, you know, my grandmother said, "I'd rather see a sermon than hear one any day of the week." Well, they didn't see any sermon that day, and we gotta do better. Our children are always watching our actions, not just what we say.
Let me just add, this is not, as I said, this video has not been released to us. It's not in our possession. It hasn't been released to the public, but we were nonetheless invited to go to the school and watch it. And the video that we saw is from one mounted area, and you see four scenes at the time simultaneously. And Kiana could not bear to go see it, and so she wanted her lawyers to go see it, and we did, and we reported back to her. I will tell you that the one thing that will make her smile is that her daughter's last moments were joking with friends. She literally has a smile looking over her shoulder and then collapses against the lockers. And just as Ben said, all of the kids were ushered away from the scene, and the grownups, the adults, the teachers, the administrators, the police, the SRO were there, but for 17 seconds did nothing material to help Kalia. Are there any other questions that you have?
Yeah, can you speak to the preventable nature? I know you all mentioned in your release that medical professionals told you if CPR had been done.
Yeah, so...
Can you talk about that?
Sure. It's critical to get oxygenated blood in a four to six-minute time period. So what could have been done is that CPR could have been provided until the AED was retrieved. There are three AEDs spread throughout the school. We got a floor plan of the AEDs, and there were three of them present. If those AEDs would have been provided, she's a young, relatively healthy young woman. The electrical charge from the AED, according to our experts, more likely than not, would have allowed her to survive. This is the perfect circumstance for an AED to be utilized. A relatively healthy young person, and all her heart was needing was an electrical charge. That's what the AED does, and it doesn't require any great expertise. There are pads in there. You place the pads on it, you push the button, and the machine basically takes over at that point. So we were not demanding any special medical acumen, just acting, stepping forward and caring about this young woman.
You know, we've all seen enough television where, you know, somebody passes out, they put them on there, and it sends an electric impulse to choke the body. And, you know, Brooke and Mark are brilliant lawyers. Our experts are brilliant, but you don't have to be brilliant to understand this. This is common sense. I mean, when you are not getting oxygen to the brain, seconds matter. Time is of essence, because what you have to do is just get oxygen to the brain to be able to extend life. It's that simple. And they had everything there. The Virginia legislature had made it the law. We got defibrillators for this specific instance. That's exactly why they made the law, for Kalia, that moment. I mean, they knew it was foreseeable, that our children at school could pass out like whether Gwendolyn? Gwyneth did in 2012. And so they had notice. They had notice. The law teaches us, once you have noticed, you have a duty to act. The state of Virginia acted. They made it mandatory that, hey, if any of the kids pass out, get the defibrillators, put it on them, give them a chance. It was preventable. The experts said, "Our common sense tells us." Our learned, lived experiences affirm that her death was preventable if they would have only acted, if they would have only followed the law, if they only would have employed their common sense.
Was there any indication Kalia was speaking at all? I know in the lawsuit, it says they turned her over, rubbing on her back. Was she ever speaking during this time? Was the video able to show you that?
There's no sound with regard to the video. You can see, and it's difficult to say in front of a parent, but you could see her legs twitching originally, but then you see no movement thereafter, no sign of life other than just the first seconds. There was a requirement to step in. When the rescue squad, when the EMTs arrived, 16 minutes later, what they found was this young woman, a systole on the floor, no heartbeat, nobody performing CPR, and no AED on the scene. They said, "Go retrieve your AED and bring it here," and commenced CPR at that time. The whole reason that all of this training is required and like is just for this type of circumstances, and painfully, these individuals just failed to act. I don't know. The only video that we've been provided is the hallway video, and it wasn't enough for me to make a judgment right now as to whether he had it on or not. But it would just come down to whether or not they have a school protocol that requires that. The only video that was provided to us was the hallway video, and as I said, it's from a fixed mount, and so you can see in four different directions simultaneously what is going on. And you see Kalia on the ground, you see the other children being ushered away. But if there is any other video, we'll certainly get it. The body camera has a component where, seconds after it's commenced, you get sound, too. So we will get that. So what we have so far are the documents that have been provided to us under FOIA and other requests. So the school has only provided a smidgen of the documents that are relevant in connection with this circumstance. In a school setting, in a prison setting, and like, you basically have to commence a lawsuit in order to retrieve additional information. The school declined to provide us the video so that we could release it to you, citing FERPA, which is a privacy protection for children. We just said, "You can block out the children. You could even block out Kalia, and you could still see what is going on." We want the public to know, and the reason that we want the public to know is so that this does not happen again.
Teachable moment.
How many teachable moments are required before action is done?
And, Mark, if I remember reviewing the notes, nobody checked for her pulse.
There was a time that we did see what appeared to be checking for pulse, but it's kind of, it's very perplexing, because the checking of the pulse was, it appeared to us, when we looked at the video, to be not connected with the initiation of CPR or the cessation of CPR. So if there was a pulse taken when she originally was down on the ground, then there's a passage of time where nothing is done, and then the SRO... And then, the SRO commences the CPR, and then unfathomably stops 17 seconds later. And we did not see any type of rechecking at that point. That if, and like I said, in the video, the nurse is right there and fails to initiate CPR originally, fails to follow up with CPR after the SRO stops, and appears to not have retrieved the AED. Also present are the principal, two assistant principals, the teacher that had just taught Driver's Ed, and I said, the three security officers present at the scene.
How did you guys get to the $85 million and then kind of where even X steps to the lawsuit?
All across America, I go around trying to argue about the value of life. And I'm particularly intentional about raising the value of black life in America, because far too often, they devalue our children's lives. And so, what I always endeavor to do is to fight for equal justice under the law. And what I want every parent out there to say, if this was my child, how much would I file my lawsuit for? Well, that's the same thing that this strong black mother wants as well. She wants America to say, "We value your child, and we value your child's life." So, we're intentional when we file these lawsuits to send a message that we want you to do everything in your power to give our children the benefit of possibility, the benefit of consideration, the benefit of humanity. Nobody can imagine why they didn't act. You had the state law, you had the policy and procedure, you had common sense. Nobody on our side of the table understands why they didn't act. But this lawsuit is filed to get answers. And the $85 million amount is to make sure we are taken seriously.
Just wanted to clarify, are you guys also saying EMS didn't act? I know you're suing the city as well. Is that just because the city attorney is the city attorney for the city?
The EMS squad did respond within the 16 minutes. We went through a decision process as to who to charge. We're comfortable with our decisions in the scope of that charge.
No, but are you blaming EMS? Did they also fail to act?
No, when EMS arrived, 16 minutes had passed without any type of oxygenated blood going to Kalia. We are focused with regard to our lawsuit on the individuals that we sued, which is the school district, technically the school board is the legal entity, the city, because the police officer, the SRO, we understand to be affiliated with that department, and then the other individuals, the teachers and the like. We're focused and intentional on these individuals. If these individuals would have stepped in, our medical experts say that Kalia would be alive today. There wouldn't be a need for any of this. She would be looking forward to completing her year, and there would be a warm and happy household. And there is not. Are there additional questions?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Prior to you all following your lawsuit, were you providing any documents from the city or from the school? As Ben said, and who were trying and who were not, an AED?
We received certain documents, and we also followed the laws to the requirements. But as part of our lawsuit, we will be checking in to see if the school fully carried out the requirement to have everybody certified, everybody capable, functional AEDs at the scene. That is, part of a lawsuit is not just, there's multiple facets to it. And one of them is to get answers to questions. And we're going to find out the answers to all of that. We got the totality of the information that the school district was willing to provide us under the law, which provides great discretion to them. And so, but a lawsuit, we're able to request documents under the force of law, subpoena from third parties and like, and we plan on going forward with that.
And is there belief any of these individuals do about Kalia's medical condition that are accused in the suit?
And her medical condition was that she was on the ground, not breathing with no oxygenated blood flowing through her. All it required was action by the individuals there. This doesn't require any great medical acumen. Every one of the individuals that are named in the complaint, we feel had a duty to act, an obligation to act, and their failure to act caused her death legally. That is what we have stated in the lawsuit. All individuals named in the lawsuit are entitled to a trial. That will go forward eventually at some point. But we've made the assertions based upon the good faith that we have and the information that we have to date. But we're happy to answer more questions.
In conclusion, before there's any verdict or any settlement or anything, the teachable moment starts now, just with the filing of the lawsuit, because you all are looking at Kalia's face. And I hope you're thinking about your children. But by the grace of God, it could be your child. That's why we gotta make sure they follow the law, they follow policies and procedures, and they use due care, as Attorney Crutus said. This is a teachable moment. Look at this face, this beautiful face with so much hope and possibility. Unless, say, not on our watch, never again. Newport News, never again, Virginia. This is for Kalia and all the people who came before her. Thank you all. Continue to keep her family in prayer.